We have a little bit more time allotted for the school board. And thank you, I've got some additional questions here. So we are gonna go ahead and get started a minute early. But I want to thank all the candidates for being here. All seven are on the ballot for is able to get elected. We have Michael Engmark, Sharon Kipka, Patrick Lewandowski.
Lewandowski.
Lewandowski. Alyssa Schumacher, Valerie Tim, Pamela Visinar. And can I call you Pam?
Yeah.
Okay. And Wayne Wilson. Okay, sounds good. And the same intro question that the candidates were given. The first question for, and I'm actually gonna budget a minute because I've got quite a few questions from the audience. So for a minute briefly describe your personal background and experiences and why you're running for office. And we'll start with Michael and come on down.
Okay, can y'all hear me? I'm Michael Engmark, born and raised in Cambridge, Minnesota. Went to St. Cloud State University and spent the next 31 years here in Foley. So central Minnesota. The reason I want to run for board is I think my skills. Most of my career was in the architecture, engineering, construction field. So you're dealing with a lot of entities, different engineers that... And, sorry. And, you know, city officials and different types of things to have a successful project, not to mention the clients. So very good at analyzing things, analytical, putting things together. And that's kind of my strongest point.
Thank you. Sharon?
Good evening. I was raised on a century-old dairy farm, the oldest of 10 children. Through my parents' direct direction, I learned the value of education, integrity, common sense, working together, and developed a strong work ethic. I'm semi-retired and work at Target East St. Cloud. I have a strong business background with 30 years' experience in inventory control, job costing, incentive, material management, purchasing, accounts, and accounts receivable. I serve as an active care volunteer. I'm a member of St. Peterson Paul's Parish Gellman, where I served on the parish council and as a religion teacher until taking my position on the board. I want us to be less top-down, more transparent, more...
Thank you. I know that minute went by fast. Patrick?
Hi, my name is Patrick Lewandowski. You might know me as Virginia's son or Tiffany's husband. I'm also Ian's stepdad, and I am Jenny's dad, and Barry's dad, and Peter's dad. I am a working artist, working from home. I am running for reelection to the school board because I am passionate about education, specifically public education, as one of my personal values. I believe in public education, not only as a means to an end, whether you're going to college, or getting a job, or whatever else, but in and end of itself, education for the sake of education. Without strong public education, we will quickly become a society of dullards, and I know we're better than that.
Thank you. Alyssa?
My name's Alyssa Schumacher, and I've been a part of this Foley community my whole life. I graduated from Foley in 2004, and I currently have three kids in our district. I have worked in healthcare for 15 years, and I am a summer fast pitch softball coach. And I teach faith formation classes weekly to serve my community. I'm running for school board because I want to make sure our district keeps moving in the right direction and to try to make positive changes to better our school, our students, our staff, and our community.
Valerie?
Hi, I'm Valerie Tim. I have two sons, one's in college now, and I still have a senior here at Foley High School. I am running for school board because I've been on the board before. It was very fulfilling. I feel really passionate about the education and the students, and really just helping give back to the community, helping the school. I really enjoy just being here and seeing the kids and seeing them get the aha moments when they learn something and they get so excited. Currently on the curriculum committee, so I come to those meetings multiple times a year. And I want to work alongside the administration to keep things moving forward. And that's the main reason I'm running again.
And Pam?
I'm Pamela Visnar. I was born and raised here in Foley, Minnesota. Went to Foley High School. I've raised my kids here in Foley. I have three boys who are in multiple sports. So we spend a lot of time here at the school. I feel like this is maybe my second home. I am the chamber president right now for this year. I've been on the chamber for four years. I'm employed by Benton Economic Partnership, where we work closely with our local businesses. I'm a voice... The reason I ran for, I'm running for school board is I want to be a voice in our community for our stakeholders and make positive changes in our classroom for our students.
Thank you. And Wayne?
Good evening, everybody. I want to say thank you, or I really appreciate your time coming here, going on your way for this. 16 years of Nustruck and Equipment as a customer support manager. I do hold a current seat on the board now. I do hold a seat on the advisory board for the St. Cloud Vo-Tec. The reason I am running is our kids are our future. We need to guide that in a direction so it goes on a good direction. That's the biggest reason I'm here, is we gotta support our kids and our teachers for our community.
Thank you. You want to send the mic back to Sharon? And the next question was also given to the candidates for a minute and a half. What would be your top two or three priorities as a school board member serving the Foley area? Why and how did you select these priorities?
The recent event of our superintendent's resignation will require the board to seek a path to new leadership. I want to partner with parents, guardians, staff, and community to get the job done. I want a transparent model that will, and this process will demand that the board roll up its sleeves and work. We also have four open spots on the board and the resignation of the chair. It will share their expertise to make this process happen. My second priority is dependent on our staff and their commitment to the READ Act. This mandate training seems to be different. It is grounded in the science of how the brain works. As a board member, I know we have, our state has the training tools. They need, we need to implement this program. Staff, thank you for your hard work. This work will lead to improved reading and support our core value of achievement. Another priority is that every tax dollar possible stay in the classroom.
Thank you. And Patrick?
According to the Minnesota School Board Association, which does a lot of the training for the school board, not just us, but all across the state, the school board has two main duties: setting policy and hiring a superintendent. Now, I would say that the people who hire an employee are the people who are responsible for managing that employee. And as a board, we have not done a great job at that. Managing an employee means keeping them accountable and transparent. Four years ago, with a previous superintendent, I questioned things at the meeting, and later I was told, no, we don't question the superintendent. Well, yeah, we do. We do question the superintendent. We're there to ask questions, whether it's because we want to know something or we're behaving as an audience surrogate. We have to be there and ask the questions to make sure our policies are being followed. We're going to be hiring a new superintendent, as Sharon mentioned, and we need to do a better job right up front laying out what our expectations are for this new person, not just as a school, but also as a community. I have learned a lot over the last four years in terms of how the processes work and the levers of power and how to get things accomplished. And my priority at this point is simply to stabilize our leadership and repair these bridges I see as broken with our students, our staff, and our community by our former superintendents. And the only way to fix those bridges is by setting those expectations from day one and holding the new superintendent accountable.
Next is Alyssa.
So my number one priority would be obviously hiring a superintendent that's going to represent our school, and our children, and our staff. Just making sure that as a board, that we are communicating effectively to hire this person, to make sure that we are finding someone who is engaged in our own community if they're going to serve in our community. With that, there needs to be board unity. I feel like right now we lack a significant amount of fellowship between board members, and that's a problem, and that makes me feel apprehensive on how the decision-making process is being done. One other thing that I want to mention is maybe we need to find a way to improve the way our buses are busing children home as far as what is actually going on. I have heard multiple complaints about buses being overpacked. Children are rowdy, children are jumping, children are getting hurt. I just feel like that's a problem, and there needs to be better etiquette. I don't know if that means educating children more, doing something more on that end as far as making sure everybody's coming home safe. It's a big job for one bus driver who is delivering a lot of kids to their homes, and it should be understood as a child that it is not okay to be hitting and kicking and jumping around. So I would like to see an improvement in that.
And Valerie?
My, a couple of my top priorities would be to establish a strategic plan. We need to establish that so that the board can continue to move forward. There hasn't been one established currently, and part of what happens with a strategic plan is to kind of lay out what we can do this year, what we can do going forward. And one of the things we have to keep maintaining is the facilities, and that will help us look forward to see what we continue to keep doing. There's a couple areas that don't have air conditioning, and, you know, other areas that just continue to need upkeep. Fields and whatnot, I mean, you know everywhere around the school. The technology is another piece of that. It was exciting because we got a lot of new equipment this year, but it's all leased. We don't actually own the equipment, and so that's a significant amount of money, too. So, you know, part of the strategic plan, too, is just keeping that all top of mind and understanding where all those funds are going. So those are a couple items that I feel we should focus on, as well as, you know, more unity in the school board. And I selected those because I actually sat down and had a conversation with the superintendent.
Thank you. And Pam?
My main, my first priority would be to find strong leadership for our school. A leader who is community-driven, who, a leader who is focused on transparency to our stakeholders, a leader who is not afraid to come up with a plan and follow through with it, who will keep a budget together and have money in our classrooms so that we're not cutting our people that are closest to our students. A leader who has goal is to enhance our academic programs, and a leader who will address mental health issues in our school and in our classrooms. My second priority would be to work together as a team. That's not just the school board. The school board has to start it, and we need to make sure that we are working with our stakeholders, working together with our parents and having open communication, and working with our business partners who support our school in many different areas.
And Wayne?
Well, I think it's pretty obviously our big first priority should be getting a superintendent, right? That we can, our community, our board members, our teachers, that everybody can agree with on this new leadership. We all have to agree on that. The second priority is going to be getting our board in line where we all agree. We all have the same goals, we're all going in the same direction. We gotta get our board back in line.
Thank you. If you could hand it back so I don't forget Michael.
Like many others, obviously, drop one is to hire a superintendent. And arguably, one of the biggest decisions we'll make. Along with that, though, is managing expectations. We are gonna do well only if we work as a team. Back to my prior experience, lots of stakeholders, you have to take everything into consideration and make everyone, once you're not on the same, on the same page, but doesn't have to be unanimous. I think there's gonna be a lot of difficult decisions and things to do. So, but once we do decide things as a board, we have to live with that, and we have to support each other and make sure that everyone else is kind of supportive and doing the right thing. The second one is, you know, policy. It's kind of the big two. There's lots of things to deal with, once again, all the stakeholders, but also, and we've seen it with government policy as far as that affects how we operate and the decisions we make, and even, you know, funding and budgetary issues. So, once again, you know, there's just so many things involved. You have to take everything into consideration. And as a board, we have to act as one and stand by each other when we make decisions.
Thank you. The next person answering will be Patrick. According to the Minnesota Department of Education report card that was published on their website in August, the percentage of Foley students meeting math standards since 2021 has increased to 56.1%, reading to 56.2%, and science declined to 44.5%. While all of these are higher than the state average, many feel that Foley students should be at a higher percentage. So for the next 30 seconds, which could go fast, what are your thoughts on how more students in the Foley School District can meet math, reading, science standards? And Patrick?
We just had a discussion about this with our MCA data at our last board meeting and at the curriculum committee meeting as well. And part of it is with the READ Act and the implementation of the strategies being, the teachers are learning there for teaching reading. It's really a lot of science of how brains work. My guess, if I had to predict something, is that in the future we'll see similar legislation and strategies around math and science. I think it's gonna start with reading and filter through. If not, we are always free ourselves to take what we learned from the READ Act training and start applying it other places.
Thank you. Alyssa?
So I agree with Patrick. As far as, I mean, we implemented a reading act to focus on reading. That's an important part of a child's development, as is math and science. And I think that they should also go that direction eventually because you may have one child who loves to read and hates math, but you also have a child that loves math and science over reading. I know I definitely have a few of those. So I would like to see that change happen all around so it's not focused on just one aspect of learning.
Since Alyssa mentioned Patrick's name, did you want to add anything, Patrick?
Nope. Thank you.
Valerie? Any question about your thoughts on students meeting math, reading, and science standards?
Echoing some other thoughts, the curriculum committee did discuss the READ Act, which everybody is, the staff is going through right now. And that will be focusing on reading, the math and science. We tend to be stronger in, actually, in Foley than reading historically, so we're hoping this will bring the reading up to par. But even though our scores are above the state, we're always striving to get them better every year. We're focusing on that.
Thank you. Pam?
As others have said, we are focusing on a READ Act, but I do also think that we need to focus on bringing more one-on-one education, one more one-on-one staff with our educators, more educators to the rooms to help with that because not all students are gonna learn in a big group setting. So we might have to break those kids down into smaller groups and give them more one-on-one help, and they all learn a different way. So it might not be our basics that we've done for years and years and years in a classroom setting. We might have to change up the way we do it.
Thank you. Wayne?
As everybody sat here tonight, our READ Act, it has to help. I don't see why you can't help raise that bar. And then our cell phone policy, obviously, we all know what cell phones do to our children. And it's gotta help with that cell phone READ Act.
And then Michael, way down the other end. Catch.
Obviously, you know, the three R's, get down to basics, keep it simple. You have to keep maintaining that type of scenario. But also, I've been asked the question, you know, why does it matter? Why do your grades matter? And I think a part of, on top of the great learning, we can provide our students here maybe a little more thought into, you know, why it matters, how it can apply to the rest of your life, and how it can, how it all, how it all works.
And Sharon?
I'm excited about the READ Act, and I want to thank our staff for moving forward with this. Obviously, they need the support to do the job, and they are the people to ask. They know how we can attain that. We might have to change where our interventionists are or how they work with our students, but our staff, we have many masters. They can help us answer this question and move forward, and we can do it.
That's enough. Thank you. Alyssa will be the next person, and I'm gonna take two questions from the audience and ask you this. How will you go about finding a new superintendent? And who are the stakeholders that you believe for the Foley schools? And Alyssa is first.
So going about finding a superintendent, it just needs to be a good interviewing process and having the correct people in these interviews, asking the appropriate questions, and getting to know them personally on a certain level to understand what their sense of community is because we need someone who's going to engage in our community, who's gonna attend school functions, who's going to become a part of this community, whether they move here or whatever that may be.
And that's, yeah, 30 seconds. I forgot to tell the timer. So you maybe got a few extra seconds. So Valerie, 30 seconds.
Could you repeat the second half of the question?
The question is, how will you go about finding a new superintendent? And who are the stakeholders?
The interview process is really important. I know you can get some parents involved and community members involved, and so there's multiple layers to the interviewing process that you can do. And obviously, the stakeholders are gonna be the community, the school, the teachers. And so it's really important just to get as many people involved as you can and then go through and get to know them and vet them out as much as you can and see if they're gonna be the right fit or not.
Pam?
Our stakeholders are our community, our students, our staff, our community members, our business members. Those are the people that put effort into our community, into our school system, and they should be heard. I'm a true believer that they should be heard. I do think that we may have to take one year and find somebody who maybe has already been a superintendent, that is maybe retired, and would like to come help get our school focused on what priorities we need to work on.
Okay. Wayne?
Our stakeholders, that's everybody. That's the whole community, that's the teachers, the parents, even the students. I mean, can't they have a little bit of a say in some of this? I can't stress on enough, interview, interview, questions, questions, and make sure we all feel good about this.
And then it goes all the way back to Michael?
Yes, during the interview process, yeah, it'd be very important to match their priorities and goals that are the school. Obviously, taking all the stakeholders into account, the staff, students, parents, community, and just making sure that, you know, communication is key. And, you know, once they are selected, that we expect to kind of work with the board, the board work with them, and to make everyone successful. I mean, we will sink or swim as a team and a community.
And Sharon?
Stakeholders involves everybody in our community, starting first with our students, first and foremost. This is going to be a big job. We have to adhere to the rules of getting a superintendent. There is trainings, and every training I've ever been to says if you have a 5-0, 6-0, or a 7-0, depending upon how many people are in your board in Minnesota, you have to have unanimous buy-in. And...
And Patrick?
Last time we used the MSBA to help our search, and I don't think they were a good fit for us. I think we'd be better off maybe doing something ourselves or getting some other help from other sources. We have a retiring board member who's one of the most respected educators in Minnesota. I think it'd be a good choice to see what wisdom he has for us on the subject, and maybe if we can get his help. I think the stakeholders is everyone. It's all of us, we're the community, the staff, the students, the parents, community, everyone. And we need to take our time and do it right. Sharon's right, it needs to be unanimous and a good vibe fit.
Thank you. The next question is also from the audience, and we'll just do a quick 15 seconds. What do you feel about the large classroom size, sometimes 27, 28 kids? And is that a good number to have the teachers feel safe in terms of working with the students and to avoid burnout? And we're going to start with Valerie.
Class size is a struggle. You know, 27 might work in a lecture class. It's hard with, when you have one-on-one, especially like science classes would be a no-no when you're, you know, handling things, but it's hard. You want to get it done.
Thank you. 15 seconds, go by quick, yes. And next is Pam?
I truly believe that 27 kids in a classroom is way too many. I think, I remember even when I was in school, there was 20, 22 maybe. That was a good fit, but there was still kids that fell behind, and we need to make sure our kids aren't falling behind.
And then Wayne?
Obviously, that's too many. Obviously, the less the students, the better, the more the teachers can work one-on-one with kids. But we have to be practical and deal with what we have for teachers, for students. It's gonna be constantly changing in each classroom environment.
And then we go all the way back to Michael's.
The 10-second round came in really hard.
Yeah. We won't cut your sex and stuff. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, another age-old problem, you know, class sizes. Obviously, you want to keep the class sizes as small as we can. The more the one-on-one interaction you can have with teachers, the better. And I know from personal experience, getting the cell phones out of the classroom, I think will make a huge impact on that.
Thank you. And Sharon?
Class sizes are too large, and then if someone doesn't show, they get half of another class or part of another class, which is not conducive to learning. The less you can have in your class, I think, the better the results. But you also have to look at the overall budget for that, and I think you need...
That's enough. We go on to Patrick?
Class size should be directly correlated to what is being taught and who it's being taught to. 27 kids in a college lecture class is probably too small. 27 kids in a kindergarten class with one teacher, way too big. So we need to make sure what we're teaching is matching what our class size is. In this case, it's probably not.
Alyssa?
27 kids in a class is unacceptable, in my opinion. You're not getting the one-on-one help that one child might need over another. And I think we definitely need to make sure we're utilizing all of the resources we have before setting this class size up that large.
The next one is also from the audience, and I would just do 15 seconds. And we start with Pam. And the question is, should there be term limits for the school board? So Pam, you're first.
Should there be term limits for every board that we're on? Probably. Is there enough people that are gonna stand up and want to be in that position? Probably not.
And Wayne?
I definitely say yes, but I get, what is it, if it's a good board member? I'd just like somebody to take a break once in a while. You might have a good board member, come on, but you can get a better board member. If they're, if they're good, they'll get voted back in. If they're, if they're good, they'll get voted back in.
And go all the way back down to Michael?
Yeah, just like politics, you know, term limits is a thing, and, you know, there's the benefit of the years of experience, but there's also the need to get some fresh thoughts and insight in there as well. So it's a, it's a good thing either way.
Thank you. And Sharon?
The people going to the ballot box can determine if they want term limits by not voting. It's just that simple.
Patrick?
My kid, my last child will be graduating in about 10 years. I have no desire to be on the board after my kids are out of school. I'm here now while my children can reap the benefits of my activities. So I'm good for, you know, get reelected again, and then I think one and a half more times. I think that's appropriate.
Thank you. Alyssa?
I think yes and no, because we can have strong board members that are currently serving the board with a lot of experience, and that's helpful, but I also do think that we need to get some fresh ideas, fresh people coming in, keep some change going in the right direction.
And Valerie?
I do say, I do believe there should be board limits. Obviously, I don't know how they would determine to set those, but just like any other elected position, that they do have set term limits.
So for your last minute here, and I am going to incorporate another question. Nope, I think I'll just leave that, since it's only for a minute. Why do you want vote, yeah, I won't stop you anymore. Why do you want voters to vote for you? Is there something else you want to tell us about yourself or your views that haven't been said?
All right, like I said again earlier, I just want to say thanks, everybody, for coming. I would appreciate your vote. With me, what you see is what you get. I'm honest, I'm not going to say a lot, but I do say it, I mean it. Just what you see is what you get, and I appreciate a vote.
And then we go to, all the way to Michael.
Let's just say, I can get things done. When I met my wife, she was going to come to St. Cloud from Bispingar, North Dakota, and work here for one year and go back, and I managed to keep her here 31 years. So...
And Sharon?
I'm experienced, vetted, and have a proven track record. I believe in a collaborative, caring, wholesome environment that is not top-down. I want our staff and community to partner with us, to be heard, and to be part of the solution. I believe I have three tasks as a board member. One, to be an advocate for students and staff. Two, to be a steward of the taxpayers' dollars. And three, to be a thoughtful listener who hears the concerns of the school and extended community. I'm always there, and I love this wonderful rural community. In conclusion, I make no empty promises. I know I'm one vote in seven. However, I can offer you experience, that proven track record, fueled by passion to do the best job possible. Serving you and your children is an honor.
Patrick?
If you want someone who just follows the crowd and votes as they're told, then I'm not your guy. Every board member is one vote out of seven. No one does anything by themselves. I think what makes a board strong is different members voicing different expertise and experiences. My voice is going to trend towards the arts, the classes, activities, and future careers that come from the arts, because I'm an artist. I think it's important enough to have one voice out of the seven mentioning those things with a level of expertise. I also think that board members need to be cheerleaders and evangelize our school. Our school is a source of community pride, and we need to have people on the board that believe in our community and our school. I've lived in Foley my entire life. I have eight other siblings, and they all left. I stayed. I believe in Foley. I believe in Foley the town, and I believe in Foley the school. Falcon Blue.
Alyssa?
What I want people to know is I'm open-minded, and I listen to both sides when making a decision. If I get on the school board, effective teamwork is a requirement of mine, along with respect. Community is a very important part of our lives and requires fellowship to be effective. I want to make sure the school board is making factual decisions with grace, acceptance, to provide the best decision possible that will affect our students, staff, and community. What I encourage people to do is to attend your school board meetings, voice your concerns, and always remember that being on a board or a committee of any kind is no easy task.
Valerie?
Vote for me because I want to restore the chain of communication. I want to work together to bring the school priorities back to the forefront. The administrator, teachers, parents, and community members all need to have a voice in the school. I've worked at Bremmer for 25, 24 years and managed seven other people, and there's differing opinions, and they each come from different backgrounds, but yet we all pull together as a team, and we support each other, and when people are out, they back each other out without hesitation. So there's a strong membership there. I can get information from everybody, and we can all come together and agree on things and keep things moving.
And Pamela?
What I want the voters to know is I will be a team player. I will work hard for our students, our staff, and our community. I will work hard to do what's best for our district, and I will make sure that our community is heard. I believe that if we take care of our staff, our student, our staff will take care of our students, and our school district, we will have a school district we will be proud of.
Thank you. This concludes the form for the Foley School Board candidates. Can we give them all a round of applause?